Good evening and welcome to everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interests or the general nature thereof? You'll have to speak up because we have a shared screen at the moment if you have one.
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's Counselor Rowe.
Go ahead, Counselor Rowe.
For bylaw 2702, application to remove closing symbol.
The municipality of Central Elgin would like to acknowledge that we gather on the land of the McKee Purchase, the traditional territory of the Haudenosaunee, Atawandran, and Mississauga Nation. We are going to adopt, first of all, the minutes of our regular meeting from March 28th. I need a mover and a seconder for the motion, please.
I can move.
Seconded, Bill. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Wynn, seconded by Counselor Fair, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated Monday, March 28th, 2022 be adopted.
Do you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
I would note at this time Deputy Mayor Marks is absent from the meeting. Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you, and I want to welcome Mike Toshner from Think Design, who's going to discuss the steps so far and what they've learned through the Port Stanley waterfront master plan. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. So, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening on where we are on the Port Stanley waterfront master plan. I have a brief presentation, about 10 minutes, just on the work we've completed thus far and as we move towards completion in June. And following the presentation, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. So I'm, as I said, I'm going to give you an overview of the process to date. I'm going to provide a summary of the feedback we received from survey number one and also review with you the design options we presented on Let's Talk Central Elgin and the feedback we received from the community on those options. I'm then going to highlight some of the key directions from this feedback and then I'll wrap up with next steps. So, if you recall, we started this project late last year and we began with interviews of council and staff. And then on January 20th of this year, we had a public information session, number one, to introduce the project. And then immediately following that meeting, we posted the survey on Let's Talk Central Elgin. And so I'm going to take you through those results just in a moment. Now, following that survey and in lieu of an in-person design charrette due COVID-19 protocols, we prepared three concepts and that were also posted on Let's Talk Central Elgin. And again, I'll share that feedback with you in a moment. And then finally, Real Consulting has been reaching out to First Nations community and we hope to have more to share with you on that in the coming weeks. Now, again, following that public information session on January 20th, we released a survey of 13 questions to help understand the community's programming preferences for the waterfront. Now, while the survey was posted online, we had 170 visitors to the waterfront master plan site. And of those 170, 110 people contributed to the survey, so we had a really good turnout on that. Those responses helped to inform the three concepts we developed and we are going to continue to reference this survey, the information we gathered to help develop and refine the waterfront master plan. So these next few slides, I'm going to take you through what we heard. First, we asked about the types of activities people do at the waterfront. There was a high number of responses for many activities, but the three highest ones were walking or dog walking, playing on the beach and swimming. And a few other popular activities included people watching, contemplating, reading, and picnicking and gathering, and finally cycling and running, some of the more popular ones. We then asked people which facilities and spaces people use. And the top three responses were the west pure walkway, Little Beach, and Main Beach. And the east pure walkway was a close fourth. We also asked about the age group that uses waterfront. And adults 40 to 64, children and families made up the highest responses, although it was pretty consistent across all age groups. We also asked about frequency of use with a large number of respondents being frequent users, which meant they were visiting at least once a week or more. And then we also asked why people don't use the waterfront. And the most people who said they don't use it indicated it was due to a lack of parking or simply because it was too crowded when they wanted to use the waterfront. And then finally, we asked what key things people would like to see provided through the master plan. The top three responses were trails, access to nature, and places to relax. So the information we gathered from that survey was then used to help us develop those three options that we presented online. And again, this was in lieu of a design charrette that we were hoping to have originally, which would have been in person, but because of COVID protocols, we had to go into an online format. So when we posted these three options, we asked people which option do they prefer? Why they prefer the option? And then we posted a bunch of precedent images to go along with those and we asked them which images they preferred. And we also had a great response in this survey with 60 responses. So these are the three options we posted. And there were many similarities between these three concepts, mostly on the west side of the creek, being pretty consistent. And then the berm area on the east side is where most of the variation between the options was proposed. So option A on the left there, we call that the programmed park and that had proposed multi-sports court area and an off-leash dog park were the main features. Option B, we called that the festival park and that provided a waterfront plaza space at the end of Main Street extension. And then option C was the berm park and that provided a raised berm, trails and more naturalized landscape, as well as a splash pad and amphitheater. So we asked, which option do you prefer? And the response was relatively balanced across all three concepts, with option C receiving a slight edge in the votes over the other two. So 17 people picked option A, and that was the program park again. 20 people selected option B, festival park, and then 23 selected option C, with the berm park making that the most selected option. Now, because it was so consistent in the voting on the three options, the reasons people picked one option over the other was really helpful for us to try to satisfy different interests. So based on the feedback, we have tried to incorporate some aspects of all three concepts into the one preferred waterfront concept that we're going to show you this evening. So this table shows the most common responses with the number in brackets indicating how many times the same comment was made. So option A, sports courts, tennis and pickleball, that was mentioned five times is the reason it was selected. The comment was made four times that it, that option appears to have a slight, slightly less development and more public space, although I should note that the amount of development in public space should be consistent between all three options. The dog park was mentioned five times as a reason for selecting it. Large open space was mentioned twice and then the fact that it was showing a performance space. Option B, the primarily, primary reason for people selecting that was the waterfront plaza and two people felt that there was greater flexibility. Now, particular with this option B, quite a few people specifically asked for the dog park splash pad and sports courts to be added to option B. And then finally, with option C, splash pad was mentioned eight times as a reason for selecting it, followed by the amphitheater five times. And then the most common reason for selecting it was the amount of naturalized area. That was 10 times that was mentioned. Now, for the precedent images, we asked people to select which one they preferred. For the naturalized open space images, riparian edge image was the most popular with 24 people selecting it. For the open space options, 32 people selected the wide waterfront promenade image. For activities, the playground, followed by the multi-sports court and dog park were the most popular. For pathways, waterfront promenade was selected 30 times. For gateways and lookout options, the waterfront plaza lookout was the most popular image. And then finally, for gathering options, the gazebo performance space was the most popular, followed closely by amphitheater. So as we move forward towards a preferred concept for the waterfront, we are looking at incorporating the following elements. First off, the plaza space, festival space at the end of Main Street, which would include an ice rink in the winter, splash pad, sports courts, dog park, playground, Main Street gateway flex space, so that'd be at the north end of the Main Street extension. And then with the pedestrian focus as that street moves towards the south to walk to the water. We want to maximize open space and naturalized landscape areas. We also want to maximize naturalized shoreline. We would provide a gazebo performance space at Half West Park. We want to maximize parking to make it more, you know, to provide additional parking and make it efficient. Maximize views of the waterfronts and then allow for future marina. Now, this slide shows the six images that are the most popular design inspiration images for the waterfront. So we're going to keep these in mind as we, again, refine the plan, develop it further. And then this concept here, this is an amalgamation of what we've heard and it blends most of the requested features into one design. So this includes the waterfront plaza at the end of Main Street extension, amphitheater in a smaller berm, naturalized areas with trails, splash pad, sports courts and dog off-leash area, and a continuous waterfront promenade around the perimeter of the park next to a naturalized shoreline. So we're in the process now refining this plan and advancing this concept based on this concept trial. So next steps, again, so we're refining the plan into that preferred design concept. And we're working towards a public information center, number three. So that would be scheduled for Thursday, May 12th. And our plan is to do this in person if we can, so as long as there's no restrictions on social gathering, we hope to do that in person. For anybody who can't make it to that meeting, we're going to post the draft master plan on Let's Talk Central Elgin for community feedback. And I expect that'll be up for a couple of weeks to receive, to receive input on that. And we'll probably also include a short survey to go along with that to help facilitate getting those comments. We'll then take that feedback and we'll present, we'll incorporate it into the master plan and then we'll present a final master plan at the June 13th council meeting. So thank you very much and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mike. Do any members of council have any questions to ask? Colleen, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mike, for this. It's, I'm sure, a lot of work in a very short amount of time, but you seem to have managed to incorporate a lot of the things that I've also heard. I had two questions, basically, and the first one is maybe more technical, but in the survey results charts that you showed early on in the presentation, I had a hard time understanding if you had 110 responses, how you got some of those higher numbers and then not all of the numbers sort of same, added to the same, same number. So somewhere like 12 and then somewhere 98. So I just, if you could explain how that works.
I think it's based on, not all of the questions were limited to one answer. So you could pick, you could pick more, you know. So, and we usually don't also require that somebody answers, so if the number was actually lower, it might be because somebody skipped an answer. So. If that, if that answers your question.
Not, not really, because in the one chart, I think you had, the highest response had a 98 index or whatever it was.
Yeah, I think, I think on some of them, you could, you could pick, well, if it was 100, if the one with, if it was in the survey number one, we had 110 responses. So, so 98 would mean that maybe somebody skipped a question. They didn't want to, they didn't want to answer it.
Oh, so it was like the top, you had to pick the top four or five, so you're going to have repeating.
Yeah, it depends on the question, I think, but not all, you know. But even if somebody said, I only wanted to answer one question on the survey, then they would be able to just answer one question. They could skip the other one.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. In this preferred design concept, understanding that the, the, the buildings are where they are, I guess. In the previous three, the Gateway Plaza on the north end, I was a little concerned that it was going to be small or non-existent. But the size and the location of this one seems to be much more in keeping with what I had anticipated, I guess, for this particular design because we don't want to cut off that part from the rest of the area, from the rest of the residents. It needs to be open. It needs to be flowing and, and so on. So with the walking paths, the bike paths, you've pretty much covered everything else here.
Great. Yeah, I mean, the drawing, we're going to come back with, this is going to be much more detailed. So hopefully we'll get it right, but if, you know, obviously there'll be opportunities to, to refine it. But this, this drawing is pretty conceptual, so.
There, I do have one follow-up, I guess, for the amphitheater and the berm that's right beside it. Is the berm meant to be some sort of a protector or just a sound barrier or both?
It would be a bit of both, I mean, realizing that the side of the amphitheater it's on, it's not protecting from the wind. But the, but the purpose of, so it's more of a seating element in this case. It would protect behind it. The challenge we have, of course, is that the ideal direction to be viewing a stage is, is from, is looking towards the south. So we worked on a number of projects where amphitheaters are put in the wrong orientation, unfortunately. And then, you know, it becomes a problem with either the, the sun isn't a performer's eyes or it's in the eyes of viewers. So we're going to have to look at that a little further. But I suspect the amphitheater is going to need some sort of protection from the wind coming off the lake. And then the berm is more, more of a, you know, for seating and, and it could provide some, you know, shelter on the backside of it, so.
And I also was surprised that there was no shade offered anywhere. It didn't seem to be a, a high priority for others.
Well, well, it definitely will be. We haven't gone to that level of detail. You know, obviously there's no tree shown on this or anything like that. So that is that next level. So it'll be quite evident on the next plan where the shade will be, where it's open, that sort of thing. But yeah, we just haven't got to that level. We're trying to keep it sort of more program, programmatic, you know, directions where things are going to go, that sort of thing. So.
All right, thank you.
We'll keep that in mind.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions? Go ahead, Counselor Krebitz.
Thank you, Mike. Just one of the slide previous to this one that you have on there, the key direction slide. It's the one just before this, maybe the other direction. But that's why there, in the future, in the meeting on May the 12th, is there going to be a question of which is the, which preference and which project is started first? Because everything can't be done at once. Is it, are you, are you asking in order of preference for people on which they prefer? Is that any consideration in the master plan?
It, it, it will be. I guess we're going to, we haven't got to that point at this stage, but we do, we will be preparing an implementation strategy. So we'll be proposing what we think makes sense from a, you know, a budget standpoint or a, you know, programmatic standpoint, that sort of thing. And so when we go to the public again, then they can, you know, everybody can comment on that. So hopefully we'll get it pretty close to being correct when it goes to the public. But implementation sequence and all of that will be provided in the, in the plan that we prepare.
Thank you. And just one more question. The future marina that you, that's shown on our plans, what's the provision for parking for those? Where is that parking supposed to go into?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, it's a very good question. You know, and I guess maybe the amount of parking is going to be, would be very contingent on the, what type of scale of marina we're talking about. So we haven't got to that point yet. And, you know, it is pretty conceptual how we're showing parking right now. So that certainly will have to be addressed as we move forward.
Okay, just off the bat, thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Other questions? I have one, Mike, that I wanted to ask, and that was concerning the armor stone area, which is, of course, just at the south edge and then the naturalized border. We have stone, you know, armor stone around the whole thing. How would you naturalize, like, how do we go about naturalizing the borders there on the east and southeast?
Well, I think, you know, there, there can be some in-water work. So it could be modified slightly to, to naturalize that. I mean, you're going to have intensive wave action, so a lot of that naturalization is probably going to be more back of the armor stone and on, on the shore. But, but we'd have to take a, you know, a more detailed look at that. But yeah, with, because of that wave action, it's not like you're going to be able to get too much in-water naturalization. It's mostly going to be back of that on, on the land.
Okay, no, I was just curious about that and why the armor stone on the side where you're supposedly going to put a marina, too.
Well, I guess it wouldn't be all, it'd be more of a hard, you know, transition just because, as you said, the marina is there or if you've got a plaza space, it can be more of an urban edge condition. So, you know, whether or not it's, you know, a wall of some sort or armor stone that, you know, that can be played with. But, again, the naturalization would be more on land, so it'll be more open, I believe, you know, that'd be our intent. The base of Main Street and the waterfront plaza, and then as you move, you know, towards the west, then it's going to be more naturalized and, and green, more green treatment.
Thank you. I like the idea of the naturalized areas. Any other questions that anyone has? If not, we have a motion. I'm going to ask Diane to read the motion and then I'll ask for a mover and seconder.
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, that council directs staff to proceed with phase three consultations regarding the Port Stanley waterfront master plan.
I need a mover. Colleen Rowe, seconder, Dennis Krebitz. Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you very much and thank you, Mike.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we're moving on now to correspondence requiring action. And we're looking at the municipal heritage committee. The first one is the Clerks List or 320 George Street. And just so that you're aware, I did speak with the owners of the property. Noreen Simmons, she calls herself Nikki, but that is officially who owns it. And they are delighted to have it put on the Clerks List because they realize it does not impede them in any way. It just recognizes its cultural value to the community. So, and that they do know that if they wanted to demolish it, it, council has 60 days in which to consider that. Does anyone have any questions on this? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Do you want it read first?
Yes, please.
Okay. The motion reads that report MHC 0122, we Clerks List of properties of cultural heritage value or interest, 320 George Street, be received as information and that staff be directed to place the Mitchell House, 320 George Street, on the Clerks List of properties of cultural heritage value or interest.
I need a mover and a seconder. Fiona, moves, seconder. Dennis Krebitz, sorry. Call vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And the second one is a second request from the Municipal Heritage Committee. And that is to appoint Dawn Leach to the Municipal Heritage Committee. I had spoken to Dawn, actually, at the time of his retirement and said we'd give him a little while to have a break. And then he had shown interest and, and then he came to our, our last meeting and is quite happy to join the committee. So we were very pleased to have him. And so we're hoping that council will go ahead and endorse the fact that Dawn Leach be on the Municipal Heritage Committee. That's what the motion says. Go ahead, Dennis.
I was just very happy to hear that Dawn Leach is interested in joining the committee. Very excited to do it and I think it'll be very beneficial to the committee.
I agree. Would you like to move that motion, Dennis? Do we have a seconder? Counselor Wynn, or Counselor Rowe, they both put their hands up. Call the vote, please.
You want the actual motion?
I'm sorry, yes, read the motion. I didn't have you do it.
Moved by Counselor Krebitz, seconded by Counselor Wynn, that report MHC 0222, we Municipal Heritage Committee appointment of member be received for information and that Dawn Leach be appointed to the Municipal Heritage Committee. Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook? Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, we have four items to be received for information. Does anyone have any questions or concerns before we have the motion for those? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, that correspondence items number one through number four inclusive, be received as information and filed.
I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Rowe and Counselor Fair? Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. We're now moving on to the Director of Infrastructure and Community Service, report on the telecommunication equipment consent, road and user agreement template. Would you read the motion, please?
Yes, the motion reads, Madam Mayor, that report ICS 0822, we telecommunication equipment consent and road user agreement template be received for information and that council approve the form and content of the telecommunication equipment consent and road user agreement template attached hereto as appendix A and authorize its use in relation to telecommunication equipment installation projects within road allowances under the jurisdiction and/or ownership of the municipality of Central Elgin.
Thank you. We need a mover and a seconder and then people can ask questions. Someone move that motion? Counselor Rowe, seconder. Counselor Wynn? Any questions on the road user agreement for telecommunications? Not, would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And it's clearly evident that Counselor Cook is having problems with her audio again. We'll hope that that can get corrected. We apologize. Okay, the next one.
Yes, I'm back in.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm glad you were able to get back in and use your sound.
Yeah, I keep getting kicked out. It's the feed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next one is a report from the Director of Financial Services Treasurer. And it's, the first one is the centerline paving tender. Would someone like to make this motion? I assume you understand what the motion is? Hey, Counselor Fair and Counselor Krebitz, all hands went up at once. I just grabbed two. Do you read the motion, please?
Moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Krebitz, that report DFS 1422, we request for tenders 2022 10 centerline painting, be received as information and that council accept the tender of Rand Maintenance Inc. for 2022 10 centerline painting in the estimated annual amount of. in the estimated annual amount of $152,274 plus all applicable taxes.
Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, would you call the vote, please?
Counsel Row?
Yes.
Counsel Krebitz?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And the next one is the request for tenders for coating of Bridge B 416, that's on Southdale Line, correct? So it's the Southdale Line Bridge. Would someone like to make that motion? Counsel Win and Counsel Krebitz. Read the motion, please.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Win, seconded by Counsel Krebitz, that report DFS 1622, we request for tenders 2022-11 coating of Bridge B 416 be received as information, and that Council accept the tender of FACA Inc. for 2022-11 coating of Bridge B 416 in the amount of $348,500 plus all applicable taxes.
Questions on that one? Actually, we've got questions this time. Counsel Krebitz and then Counsel Fair?
That came under budget, it was quite substantial, $130,000 under budget, and that money will be going into the bridge capital reserve, which will help fund our asset management, so that is good news.
Thank you, I agree. Counsel Fair?
I was, I just didn't catch how much it was under budget, I should have got that, but I didn't. I just wondered, could somebody just clarify that?
Go ahead. Through you, Madam Mayor, the annual bridge allocation that was added to the budget, I believe, is 488, so almost $100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Counsel Row?
Yes.
Counsel Krebitz?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now the Director of Fire Rescue Services, Fire Chief, monthly alarm activity report. Would someone like to move the adoption of that report? Counsel Row, seconder. Counsel Fair? Would you read the motion?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Row, seconded by Counsel Fair, that report FS 0522, we monthly alarm activities report, March of 2022, be received for information.
Does anyone have any questions for Fire Chief Omerod? He attends all these meetings and you never ask him any questions. If not, would you call the vote, please?
Counsel Row?
Yes.
Counsel Krebitz?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now we go to the Director of Asset Management and Development Services. The first one is the West Harbor Lands Risk Assessment. Would you like to read the motion on that one first, and then I'll ask for a mover and seconder?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. The motion reads that report AMDS 0922, we West Harbor Lands Risk Assessment Consultant Award be received for information, and that Council award the contract for the completion of the risk assessment for the West Harbor Lands to Stan Tech Consulting in the amount of $139,450 exclusive of applicable taxes, and that the project be funded from the interest accumulated from the Harvard Divestiture Reserve.
Thank you. I need a mover and a seconder for that motion. Counsel Krebitz, Counsel Win. Any questions you have on that? Counsel Row?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question, so is this the final step? So after this risk assessment, then the municipality would have the, hopefully, the record of site condition? Is that the goal out of this particular work?
Mr. Perrin, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counsel Row, so the, this work plan would provide us with the required documentation to submit to the Ministry of Environment, Conservation of Parks to obtain a record of site condition. And the work plan includes three separate submissions to the MECP to satisfy comments back, because typically they never accept a, a study on the first floor out, they always refer back for additional work.
Yes, we've experienced that with the berm. Any other questions? Go ahead, Counsel Row.
So then, just to follow up, so the environmental assessments that have been going on there already are feeding into this final report, is that correct? Or is everything okay with those, that EA work?
Go ahead.
Right, so the Phase One and Phase Two environmental work that's already been completed to date, as well as the groundwater monitoring, will provide information to this risk assessment and risk management plan. In order to go to the risk management plan, the work that was done previously, the environmental conditions would not be in keeping with the generic contamination levels that are already in regulation. If we met those generic levels, then we wouldn't need to go to this risk management plan. There's exceedances on the site, so similar to the lands that were divested to the municipality through the Harvard Divestiture Process, the transfer, we will be undertaking more clear delineation of the contaminated area and then proposing risk management measures that can be put in place on a site-specific basis to alleviate any concerns with respect to human health or the national environment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Counsel Row?
Yes.
Counsel Krebitz?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And now the report of the monthly building and bylaw report. Need a mover to receive this for information. Counsel Row, seconder. Counsel Win. Any questions you have before I have Mrs. Wilson read the motion? Go ahead, Counsel Fair.
I just had one, it's in regards to the dog by law enforcement. I noticed there were complaints, and I know everyone's heard about that one dog in Lynnhurst, and it's out and around again. I'm wondering, I don't see any fines. I'm just wondering why not?
I believe that by law enforcement staff have attended the premises and have given warnings if they can catch the dog, or if they haven't been able to catch the dog out. So if they catch the dog out, then they're able to find.
So they actually have to catch the dog running loose to find them?
There has to be some evidence that the dog is running at large.
Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote, please? I'm sorry, you had to read the motion of your.
I'm gonna read it all?
Yes.
Moved by Counsel Row, seconded by Counsel Win, that report AMDS 1022, we March 2022 monthly building and bylaw report be received for information.
Call the vote then.
Counsel Row?
Yes.
Counsel Krebitz?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And now the bylaws, we are taking each one separately because Counsel Row declared a conflict on the one. I'm just going to take them in order. I need a mover and a seconder to adopt bylaw 2702, please. Moving the holding zone from Phase Three of the Gokomo. So Counsel Win and Counsel Krebitz.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Win, seconded by Counsel Krebitz, that bylaw 2702 be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote.
Counsel Row, sorry, that's declared. Counsel Krebitz?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Second motion, second motion on that bylaw?
Seconder on that?
We need a mover and a seconder for the final motion. Counsel Fair? Counsel Krebitz?
Motion reads, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Counsel Krebitz, that bylaw 2702 be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Counsel?
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. And now the second bylaw. We need a mover and a seconder for first and second reading for bylaw 2703. Do we have a mover and a seconder, please? Counsel Row moves. Counsel Win, seconds.
Motion reads, moved by Counsel Row, seconded by Counsel Win, that bylaw 2703 be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote.
Counsel Row?
Yes.
Counsel Krebitz?
Yes.
Counsel Cook? Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. My final motion on the bylaw. We need a mover. Oh, Counsel Krebitz is moving.
Oh, no, I actually have a comment.
Oh, okay.
Before the third reading of that bylaw 2703, there was just a spelling mistake or the name with error in the, on the agenda, but it was straightened out, straightened out in advance. Just wanted to make clarification on that. You read it, Sydney, and it should be common.
Thank you. It's been corrected on the.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a mover and a seconder for the final. Go ahead, Counsel Krebitz is moving. A seconder, please. Counsel Row? Call the vote, or read the motion and call the vote.
Moved by Counsel Krebitz, seconded by Counsel Row, that bylaw 2703 be read a third time and finally passed.
Counsel Row?
Yes.
Counsel Krebitz?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
All right, then we have this, we don't have any public notice that I'm aware of tonight, so motions and notice the motion on the Dickens Day Parade, the motion was in the agenda on the insurance refund. We would need a mover and a seconder for that motion. Counsel Fair? Counsel Win? Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Counsel Win, that the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin direct staff to reimburse the Port Stanley Lions Club $339, which represents the cost for liability insurance for the 2021 Dickens Day Parade, which took place on Friday, November the 26th, 2021.
Call the vote, please.
Counsel Row?
Yes.
Counsel Krebitz?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Does anyone have any other business that they would like to bring up? I have one that was kind of a fun, one that Ian McCollum actually, from the radio there, called me to tell me that Port Stanley had been named on the World Atlas list of the 11 most charming villages in Ontario, and that's along with Niagara on the Lake and Bayfield and Dover Morey, and Port Stanley was one of the ones. He just regretted the picture. It's a beautiful picture of the boats and the harbor, but the creek is extremely muddy at that point. So if you want to look it up, I believe we've put it on our social media for Central Elgin, but I thought that was very nice, and there was a nice coverage of Port Stanley in the London Free Press on Saturday, and from some of the developers, et cetera, and Mr. Brooks was quoted as well. Any other business? If not, we need a motion to move into closed session. Need a mover. Counsel Win and Counsel Krebitz moved and seconded. Read the motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Win, seconded by Counsel Krebitz, that Council proceed into closed session at 7:45 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to security of property and a position plan criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Call the vote, please.
Counsel Row?
Yes.
Counsel Krebitz?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you.